Okay. If everyone will take their seats, we're about to get started. You just press the button, but you gotta turn it off, too. Yeah, turn it off, too. Please take your seats. I need the gavel. If everyone can please take their seats, we'll go ahead and get started. Please take your seats. Good evening and welcome. I will call to order the June 7th, 2021 inauguration meeting of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Omaha. Roll call: Bagley, Festerson, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the National Anthem performed by Michelle Keller and the invocation by Reverend Daniel Hendrickson, President of Creighton University.
Let us pray. Good and gracious God, we gather in celebration of and thanksgiving for our democratic electoral process which has resulted in the reelection of Omaha Mayor Jean Stothard to an unprecedented third term. We pray that as a community, we will always take our democratic principles to heart and thereby hear all voices from all corners of our great city. We thank you for the diversity of talents, experience, and perspectives represented here today and in our Omaha community and of the greater Omaha metropolitan area. We ask you to endow Mayor Stothard with wisdom, energy, and inspiration for the work that lies ahead on behalf of all citizens of Omaha. We are grateful for her many talents, and we ask you to continue to multiply her gifts and skills for the betterment of all. Bless and refresh our community as we are coming together again after the challenges of the past year brought our community, our nation, and our world. As we collaborate and heal, keep us always mindful of the needs of others. Help us remember those who have gone before us and bear in mind those who will succeed us as we go about our daily lives. Most of all, let us not forget to seek your guidance in all that we say and do. We pray in and of many traditions and through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you. Please be seated. An affidavit publication is on file for this meeting and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the East Wall of the Legislative Chambers. The first item is the Mayor's Oath of Office. The Honorable Judge Marcella Keim will administer the oath of office to Mayor Jean Stothard. At this time Congressman Don Bacon will speak, followed by Mayor Jean Stothard.
It's sort of crowded, just like the Chamber of Congress right there, you know? It's wonderful being in this room with the who's who of Omaha, great leaders, business leaders, political leaders, faith leaders, elected leaders. I just, it feels good to be out of COVID where we can be in person and see each other up close and personal, but wonderful to see friends. I think of that beautiful oath that Mayor Stothard just gave. We give our oath to the Constitution, and in this case also the Constitution of Nebraska, but it helps make our country so special. We don't give oaths to individuals. It's to the Constitution, the law of the land, and it does make our country special. And I think of the prayer Father Hendrickson tonight. We are truly blessed to live in a land where we elect representatives, whether city council or mayors, federal level county. Leadership's not inherited, it's not bought, the people are sovereign. So we praise the Lord tonight that we have this kind of country where the people are the sovereign and get to choose. Tonight is a historical night. Mayor Stothard swearing in at her third term. If you, as she fulfills this term, it will be the longest any mayor has served in Omaha since 1930. Ninety-one years. And by the way, that mayor wasn't consecutive terms either, it was here and there, but the longest in 91 years. Fact is, when people after us, when we're long gone, when they read the history of Omaha, Mayor Stothard will be part of the pantheon of the leadership of the city, part of our history, that we'll be very proud of. I gotta tell you, it's hard to be elected three times in a row. I would really covet four-year terms, by the way. Just saying. But you know, it's easier for the legislative branch to get elected three times, and I would say the city council is also much, very much in the legislative realm. We're, in the legislative side, you're one of many, but when you're the executive, you're that one face, and it's really hard for voters to do a third term historically. It takes a very special person for the voters to say, yes, we're gonna do a third term. And Mayor Stothard is that special person. And if you look as to why, it's that the people, the voters, the constituents, the citizens trust her. You know, when you do polling, and I do polling every two years, public safety is always number one. And the mayor has really done a great job there. She's added 100 police to the police force, she added a new precinct to Elkhorn, and even during the tough time that we had a year ago, in which major cities all over our country struggled, Mayor Stothard took very prompt and appropriate action. She didn't cater to the left or to the right, she did the right things, but did it immediately. And frankly, Omaha showed the way how to do this right, in my view, and the voters recognized that. She's also with the city council partnership, has done a great job preparing Omaha for the future. Just think about the future riverfront. That is gonna be beautiful for decades and decades and decades down the road. Then you look at what we're gonna do with UNMC, with the Next Tea Project, with 8,000 new jobs, making Omaha the center for pandemic research in the country. And also the hard work she's been doing for low and mid-income housing. Bottom line, she's worked hard to leave, to make Omaha one of the best places to live. In fact, when you look at focus groups and polling, Omaha every single year rates as one of the best cities to live in. And I would say it's the great people who elect great leaders, whether at the city council level and at the mayor level, that's made that possible. So tonight, when the mayor read her oath, I hope that we think through that and keep her and her family in our prayers, and the city council, too. That we make a weekly prayer choice, if you will, and add to our weekly prayer list, and pray for the mayor to give, so God gives her extra wisdom, gives her extra strength, because there's good days and there's hard days, you never know when a crisis is gonna come up and very seldom have any warning. We pray that God give her extra understanding and insight to lead this great city, and we also pray that God gives her extra protection. And while we're praying, we say also thank you, that we've been blessed to have a mayor on our third term, the longest in 91 years, that is one with a two-thirds vote mandate. It's so impressive. So tonight, we're grateful for you, Mayor Stothard. I also want to just take a moment, too, to say congratulations to our city council, who, each one of you had very tough races as well. I commend you. I've been there. Thank you. Congratulations, Mayor Stothard.
Mayor Stothard will speak.
Well, good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for all of you for being here tonight at this very, very special occasion. I would first like to acknowledge my daughter, Elizabeth Letty, who is here tonight, and my son, Dr. Andrew Stothard, and I want to thank you both for standing with me tonight. Congressman Bacon, I appreciate our positive and productive working relationship and also our friendship. The pandemic has highlighted the need for an even stronger coordination between local and federal offices, especially funding issues, healthcare delivery, and public communications. I know that we will continue to work together in the years ahead, so thank you again. Your Honor, Judge Keim, thank you for administering the oath. It is the pledge that we take before witnesses to serve in public office. And Father Hendrickson, the city is honored to partner with you and Creighton University on many important initiatives, the success of your students and our city, so thank you for your invocation. Tonight, three members leave the city council. Council members Ben Gray and Chris Jerem both served 12 years on the city council. In fact, Ben and Chris and I were all elected to the city council together at the same time in 2009. I know their service to our community will continue in many other ways. Although her time on the city council has been short, I also want to thank Councilmember Colleen Brennan for serving and for running for office. It's been a pleasure getting to know you. Councilmembers Festerson, Harding, Melton, and Palermo, congratulations on your reelection, and I really look forward to continuing our positive relationship as we help make Omaha an even better city, so congratulations. To council members-elect Juanita Johnson, Danny Bagley, and Don Rowe, congratulations to you. I know that you all will make contributions to the betterment of our city and to your districts. I look forward to working with each one of you. My advice to new members is something that I learned early on years ago. Public trust is critical to success. We can earn trust by being open, transparent, and responsive, and trust is not given, it is earned. Once lost, it's hard to regain, and without it, our jobs are gonna be very, very difficult. So let's pursue greater trust together as we serve our citizens who elected us. To the citizens of Omaha, thank you all so much for electing me to a third term. To serve as our city's first female mayor and to begin an unprecedented third term in office is both incredibly special and very humbling. It is an honor that I will promise to live up to, and once, and I am very excited to begin. I will work very, very hard every day to earn your trust and make you proud of our work and even more proud of our city. To those who voted for other candidates, please know that your input is important to our city's success, and I welcome to hear from all of you. Many of the questions and the issues we faced in this election were different, even from those just four years ago. The pandemic brought challenges and issues that we have never faced before. We are headed in the right direction, and we will do everything possible to achieve full public health and economic recovery. Social justice and racial equality are issues that touch all of us. We acted quickly and responsibly the summer of 2020. We have a responsibility and an obligation to do more, and I know that we can. Omaha is a community of tolerance and goodwill. Greater understanding and solutions will come from every one of us. So let's work hard together on these issues. My priorities for the next four years are very clear. We will continue to make Omaha a safer community and make a very good police department even better. Public safety is our most critical obligation, and I am confident in the progress that we will continue to make. We have achieved our initial pandemic recovery checklist to lead Omaha through the last 15 months. We will continue to address the health, economic, and social consequences of COVID-19. With overwhelming voter approval, our roads bond issue passed last year, and road resurfacing and repair has now doubled to what we were doing previously. After decades of neglect, our city streets will improve every year. Keeping taxes as low as we can is only possible with an intense focus on the city budget, and I will always remember whose money that we are spending. The economic development and job growth taking place in Omaha right now is unprecedented. There are more announcements to come, and managing the city's role in all of these incredible projects will be my responsibility. Our city services are important to each citizen: city parks, libraries, fire emergency services, trash, recycling, many, many more, and we are dedicated to improving the taxpayer experiences for the services that the taxpayers fund. And during the next four years, we will further enhance Omaha's reputation. Omaha will be an even more inclusive city, one that welcomes everyone and where everyone feels at home. Please know how grateful we are to be able to serve this city. Omaha's momentum is back, and our city will be better than ever. Thank you all.
Next is the city council oath of office. The Honorable Judge Stephanie Hansen will administer the oath of office to council members Pete Festerson, District 1, Juanita Johnson, District 2, Danny Bagley, District 3, Vinnie Palermo, District 4, Don Rowe, District 5, Brinker Harding, District 6, Amy Melton, District 7. Item 10 is the election of the city council president. A majority has been reached, four votes for Pete Festerson, three votes for Amy Melton.
Madam Clerk, I'll call for the election of the Vice President.
A majority has been reached, four votes for Vinnie Palermo, three votes for Brinker Harding. At this time, the council president will address the Assembly.
Well, thank you, Madam Clerk. I look forward to working with you and your excellent staff over the next four years, and also Jim Dowding, our Chief of Staff and City Council staff in this capacity. But first, I want to recognize my family who's here tonight, too. My wife Paige and my oldest daughter Anna. Give a little wave. My youngest daughter Caroline could not be with us here tonight, and my mom Sigrid could not be with us here tonight, but she's probably my biggest supporter, so our thoughts are with her, too. I was reviewing some old photographs from my first inauguration in 2009 today, when the girls were just four and six, and now here we are. Anna is a senior graduating from Central High School and off to college this fall, and Caroline's a rising junior at Central High School, and I'm really proud of the young women they've become over this timeframe. Second, I'd like to thank the residents of District 1 for their strong vote of confidence, and let them know that I'll continue to work hard for them over the next four years. I do also want to congratulate the mayor for an unprecedented third term. Not only are we the first female mayor of our city, but an unprecedented third term, and under very difficult personal circumstances, too. I think that should be noted as well. We were also first elected together in 2009, and I know we both feel strongly, there's a lot more work to be done. I also want to commend you on your choice of your new Chief of Staff. I see we have Tommy Worm and his wife Eileen with us here tonight. I've known Tommy and have worked with him in city government for probably 20 years, so I look forward to that relationship, and I appreciate your commitment to our city. Lastly, I want to thank my colleagues. It's nice to all be back on the same row and to be able to see everybody's faces again, and honored that you've placed the trust in me to be your president over the next two years. I see it as my job to build the trust and consensus on this body and to effectively and to effectively build our working relationship between current members and new members alike and help make all of you successful as council members that represent your districts and your constituents. And if you're like me, you have a long list of things you want to get done in your district, but I also see it as my job to help organize and prioritize our work and our committee structures to provide leadership on citywide issues. So I'll be asking you and challenging you to help us address those over the next two years in that capacity as well. Some things like our economic recovery for COVID and mental health and affordable housing and public transit and diversity and inclusion and police community relations, I think are all very important citywide issues we need to focus on as a group. And I've always said the key to making a difference in this job is making sure you're paying attention to your constituents and servicing their concerns and doing your homework every week on our agenda and voting thoughtfully. But really, what makes a difference is when you get above that and rise above that to focus on these citywide issues and get proactive about them, and that's what I hope we can do together as a group. With that, Madam Clerk, I'll ask the Council Vice President to provide some remarks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you all for being here tonight. We usually are here this late on a Tuesday night, but not on a Monday, so bear with us. We'll be here tomorrow. I first wanted to thank the voters of District 4. The last four years are very challenging, to say the least, especially running an election. We all know, every elected official in the room, how challenging that is. So I'd like to thank the District 4 voters for not only electing me, but also winning 21 out of 21 precincts. It speaks loud and clear of what I first ran on, and that was to work hard every single day for the people that I represent, the area I live and where I raised my family. So, and I don't say it as good as Pete, so I'm glad he got through what he got through. But, and we know also, working elections, knocking on doors, putting out signs. The number one question I get is, how do you like being on the council? And the question's been very easy. I mean, I love it. There is, and I've told the new council members that have been elected or sworn in here tonight, I promise you the reward is much more, well, than the emails and phone calls you'll get as well. And the other thing I get is, how do you like the mayor? And, you know, because everybody likes Jean, let's be honest, right? And I'm like, well, it took me four years, but I figured her out. If, if we're getting along, it's, hey, Vinnie, how's it going? And if we're not, it's, hey, Councilman Palermo, we gotta talk. So, over the next four years, we're going to work on the Vinnie part a little more. So, Mayor, congratulations to you as well. We know running elections, besides all the hard work you put in, it's your family that's behind you. And I almost have them all here. The clerk limited us on tickets, so I couldn't invite them all, and I'm just talking about my kids. So my oldest, Paige, is not here, but Vinnie's here, Ella's here, and they're almost in order, too. And they do not want me to say their names, so that's why I'm saying their name. Anna's here, Claire's here, Isabel's here. And the little kid in the back that everybody's saying, why did somebody bring their two-year-old hair? That's mine, that's Roman. So, and we have a lot of teenagers, so I promise, he's the one we really, really love in the house. So that's why he's here. My friends that are here, my family that's here, my extended family, my mom, my in-laws. And again, I can't say your name because Sherry and Madam Clerk, I'm right at 24. I know we got 25. So, but, sitting here, and I know the lights, you know, going dim, like, cut it off. We're at the Grammys or Oscars or whatever, but I still got a long ways to go. I promise, and this is something else I said to us that have got reelected and the new council members. Lean on your staff. Our staff here at the City Council, they have the answers. They help us with the questions we have, the constituents we need to work with. And Mr. Dowding, you and your staff are by far the best in the business. But there's another part to this meeting and what we do weekly as well, and that's the clerk and her office, who are the best in the business. So, like Congressman Bacon said earlier, we, there's two different branches here. We do work well together, and it's that staff, it's the directors, it's the clerk's office that puts everything together, that makes us very, very good at what we do. And I was blessed. I had a, my first president that was on the council when I was elected was Ben Gray. Very knowledgeable. I listened to him, I followed him. And the last president I had, who just lost his job about 10 minutes ago, was President Jaram, who, again, was very knowledgeable, and we took their experience and leaned on them. And now we'll be helping our colleagues out as much as we can. And also Rich Pauls, he kind of disappeared. He went to Lincoln, and nobody's heard from him since. But if he's watching, he'll be like, man, Vinnie, why'd you do that? But anyway, I got along really good with Rich Pauls, and I always leaned on him for stuff as well. So, thank you, everybody, for being here. We will be right back to work tomorrow at 2 o'clock, so if you're not doing anything, come on down and see us. So anyway, thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mr. President.
So I have an announcement. We're going to start using the light system for our next speakers. I can't compete with two rows of Palermos or two rows of Begleys, so we'll give them both some extra time.
I save the best for last. My wife. I had to write down my kids, I'm being honest. Aubrey, thank you for telling me to go knock, telling me to leave the house. Not just to go knock, but to leave the house. Thanks for keeping me on task, and thanks for taking care of our family when I wasn't there over the last few months, so. And this is exactly what my sister April said. Don't call people out by name because you'll forget somebody. And once she shook her head, I knew. But Aubrey, I love you, thanks for what you do.
Okay. That was a good recovery. I'll now recognize Councilmember Johnson for her remarks.
Well, thank you. Thanks, everyone. Thanks, everyone, for coming and spending time out of your busy schedule this evening for this huge occasion, especially for us new on the council. I would like to first say, I'd like to thank God, who's the head of my life. And then I would also like to thank my campaign committee, my family, and, most importantly, District 2, for them having the courage and the mindset to vote me in office today and serve as their representative for the next four years. More, I would also like to say that my campaign run on, ran on, three things, and that was inclusion, jobs, real talk, and real change. All of the things that our mayor just stated in her opening. And I'm going to work very hard, and District 2 is going to work very hard, in making sure that we have a better Omaha. Thank you.
Next, I'll recognize Councilmember Begley.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's great to be here tonight, and looking over this body of people here, it really hits you, the humbleness that the voters bestowed on you to take this seat. And I spent a lot of time indoors, like the rest of us up here did, talking to the voters, and it really was a humbling experience and a learning experience. I look in the crowd tonight at a lot of people that helped me, and you know who you are. And I look over at my family, who's here tonight. Oh, I'm going to embarrass my daughter Madeline really bad, because she always, I annoy her a lot, so I got that done for the day, Maddie. So, my oldest daughter Megan, and my son John, and my daughter Molly, and Maddie, did I mention you? And their wonderful mother Kim, who teaches at Creighton for many years. Father Hendrickson's in the house. You've got a great professor over here in pharmacy. My brothers Brian and his wife Pam. Brian's a principal at Miller North. And Mark and his wife Margaret. And my brother Jim and his wife Rebecca. And my godson Jake is over there. He moved up from Kansas City six months ago to work on a campaign of his godfather. So I'm really happy that you're here tonight, Jake. And again, I want to thank the voters, even those that didn't vote for me. I'm going to work hard in the next four years, every day, and I'm looking forward to getting to work tomorrow. And lastly, I want to congratulate the mayor on your reelection and my colleagues up here who have gone out of their way to help me in the last three weeks, and even before that, many of you did, and that, I'll always remember that. And the staff at the city that I had orientation with, it really puts my mind at ease on how great and knowledgeable and helpful they are. So lastly, I'll say, around Memorial Day, I always take my kids to the graves of my family down at St. Mary's and Calvary. And I went alone this year, and, you know, you trim up the headstones, and it really made me think of the power of this seat and what it means to the Begley family of going back to my great-great-grandparents. And my mom and dad are up in heaven with all those people at Calvary and St. Mary's, and I know they would be really proud tonight, and they're looking down because I can feel their presence here, and I want to take that with me every day the next four years. So thank you very much.
Councilman Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. President. I love the city we call home, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm honored and humbled by this opportunity to work for my neighbors in District 5 and the entire city of Omaha. In my mind, there really are no boundaries separating our districts. I want to be accessible to anyone who will share their ideas for building a stronger community. I look forward to working with Mayor Stothard and her staff. We're fortunate to have a strong mayor who has set out a clear vision for the future of our city. She has eight years of experience, and the best is yet to come. I've spent several of the last several weeks getting to know each of my colleagues up here and cannot wait to hit the ground running with all of them. We each have unique strengths, and collectively, we will help make Omaha the best city she can be. Finally, I want to thank the lovely Mrs. Rowe and my family for their support in this whole process. I knew what I was getting into when I made the decision to throw my hat in the ring. I'm not sure they really knew. Oh, and one more thing. Thank you to my neighbors in southwest Omaha for trusting me with this important job. My prayer has been that God would grant me the wisdom to make sound decisions and that those decisions would always be made in love.
Councilman Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, and congratulations to Mayor Stothard and my six colleagues on their elections to represent the citizens of Omaha. I look forward to working with all of you on our united goal, to do what's best for all of Omaha. It's been my privilege to represent District 6 and all of Omaha for the past four years, and I'm truly humbled to have earned the support of the voters of District 6 again, and I'm honored to have the opportunity to continue in this role for four more years. I look forward to working with the city clerk and her professional staff, as well as council staff led by Jim Dowding and his professionals. I forgot I was going to mention at the beginning, too, so let me take a quick aside. I saw, there are a lot of people here tonight, but I got to point out Marty Belik is here, the recently retired Chief of Staff to the mayor. And I probably need to say, Tom Warren, he already looks really, really relaxed. We, as a community, face many challenges, but I see those as opportunities. We must continue to prioritize public safety, which includes ensuring our first responders have the necessary equipment and training to protect our community, and in particular, our most vulnerable and those in need of mental health services. Further expansion of our mental health co-responder program and advanced crisis intervention training for our officers will be essential. We must strive to create economic, an economic environment that presents an equal opportunity for all to be successful. This does not ensure or guarantee equal outcomes for all, but we must create an environment with equal access. This also includes fostering, fostering work to grow our current and prospective partners in the philanthropic and charitable communities. We need to form these collaborative public-private partnerships to move our city forward. We see the fruits of those labors, of these partnerships, in projects like the Riverfront Park, Crossroads, U&amp;MC, Blackstone, Dundee, the Omaha, the South Omaha Business Improvement District, Benson Ames, Benson Ames Innovation Center, Hartwood Preserve, and Old Town Elkhorn, just to name a few. I'm excited about the prospects of growing that list for all the betterment of Omaha. But these relationships, these partnerships, can also be keys to addressing important issues like missing middle income, missing middle and affordable housing, and on transportation issues relating to moving people from areas of high unemployment to areas of employment. As a member of this council and on our planning committee, we have been working on these issues and are anxious to present viable programs to address these concerns. In addition to these areas, we must also concentrate on blocking and tackling the basic city services while being mindful, as the mayor stated, of whose money it is that makes these programs and these services possible, and that is your tax dollar. As I said at the outset, I look forward to working with all members of our city council for the betterment of our entire community. Although I think we missed an opportunity this evening to respond to the message we heard during the campaign from the community as it relates to elections, and in tonight's case, to the leadership positions of this city council, that would have been a more diverse and more inclusive. We have extremely well-qualified individuals that could and should have the opportunity to serve in these roles. This is in no way a statement that the individuals selected tonight are not capable of performing their duties. They most certainly are. But there are others that, I believe, deserve the opportunity to serve in those roles. Finally, I want to thank my family for coming along on this ride with me. I'm joined here tonight with my wife Rebecca, a founding owner and partner of Tac Architects, my daughter Elizabeth, who will be attending the University of Indiana this fall, my other daughter Grace, who will be a sophomore at Westside this fall, and my father-in-law Jim and his friend Joy. Omaha is a vibrant community with an even brighter future, so let's get to work.
Councilmember Melton.
Thank you. Well, in the eighth year that I'm on the end, and so by the time it gets to me, everybody's going, all right, come on, Amy, let's get going. We've been sitting here too long, but gotten used to it. I do want to thank my family who is here. My husband Scott is here, and all three of my sons are here. Jacob, Thomas, and Jimmy all made it down. My parents, Tom and Jerry Sanderson, yes, that is their names, Tom and Jerry. And my sister Teresa Thibodeau, my sister and best friend, also, also made it down. I want to thank all of you for coming tonight, supporting me throughout all of this. And I think, like you said, Pete, I think when I first got elected, Jimmy was in first grade, and he's now going to start high school at Creighton Prep next year. So I think, for most of his memory, I've been on the city council. He doesn't really know what it's like not to have mom gone on Tuesday nights, many other nights for neighborhood meetings, gone on weekends sometimes, and missing a baseball game every now and then. So I want to thank my family for the sacrifices they make to allow me to do what I do. And I think that's very important, and I thank all of you for always being there for me and doing this for me. So thank you very much. I also want to say thank you, Mayor Stothard. I was elected to the city council when you were first elected mayor, and I am just so pleased and happy that we've been able to work together for the last eight years. I thank you for your support, for your leadership, for your mentorship, and for always having that open door. I love our regular meetings where we can openly, honestly, talk to each other about our goals, about our thoughts. And even if our goals, about our thoughts, and even if we have a disagreement, to be able to explain, you listen, and explain your thoughts, and usually you convince me to come over to your side. So I really do appreciate all of the time and effort, and I look forward to serving a third term with you as our mayor. So thank you very much. I know Brinker, a lot of times, sometimes I talk first, and you'll say, "Well, I say what Amy said," and you covered a lot, so I'm not gonna repeat it, and I appreciate all the successes that we've had. And I want to acknowledge Marty Bealik. Marty, really, I'm gonna miss you. You've been here for the last eight years, you've always been accessible. Always return a call. I mean, when you call Marty Bealik, you'll get that call back almost immediately if he doesn't answer the first time. So thank you for all the help that you've given me along the last eight years in being there for service to our city, and then our county, over the last 35, 40 years? Okay, we'll just kind of leave it at that. So, thank you. And to Chief Warren, I know many people were referring to you as Tommy, but when I started my law career, you were Chief Warren, and so I'm not sure that I'll be able to ever call you anything other than that, and I look forward to working with you as chief of staff, so I think I can still call you that moving forward. So thank you for coming, and I look forward to working with you again in kind of a different area. But I also want to thank Eliza Butler and our entire clerk's office for the wonderful job that they've done putting this all together tonight. And as soon as I'm done talking and we vote on a few more things, we'll be able to see all the work they've done outside with the tents in setting up such a wonderful reception for all of us to enjoy after this tonight. So I want to thank you for all your work, and I really appreciate it. And then our staff in the city council, Jim Douding and everybody that works in the city council staff has been wonderful. They are so responsive, and they help us help all of you, and help all of our constituents, and we wouldn't be able to do what we do without them. And again, there's so many other people in this room to thank, all of the directors. But I really enjoyed my two terms on council. My first term, I got to sit next to Dr. Franklin Thompson, who I miss, who was also very much of a role model for me and a mentor, and somebody that I still go to to ask questions. And it's been a real pleasure sitting next to Brinker Harding for the last four years. I really appreciate your advice, and I'm glad that we get to sit next to each other for another four years. I really appreciate it. Anyway, thank you all for coming down tonight. I do think that working together with our council, as we have done in the last eight years, I have said on multiple occasions, unlike Washington, Congressman Bacon, this legislative body actually does work well together, regardless of the party. We don't have people putting notes on each other's doors and things that I think you have to deal with. We actually work well together. I have had a great relationship with the council members, those that are currently here, and those council members that have left, and I look forward to having a good relationship with the three of you moving forward. And I think with that open discussion and continued willingness to work together that we have done over the last eight years, that you will see our city move forward, because we're all willing to work with the mayor, we're all willing to sit down and talk, and try and figure out what's best to move Omaha forward. So I look forward to doing that over the next four years. Thank you all very much.
Item 15 is approval of the city council rules of order.
Is there a motion? Rocco.
Bagley.
Aye.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yeah.
Johnson.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Row.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 16 is approval of the city council liquor rules.
Is there a motion? Rocco.
Bagley.
Aye.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yeah.
Johnson.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Row. Motion passed seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 8:27.
Before we take a motion to adjourn, I do want to repeat Councilmember Milton's remarks about thanking everyone for coming and being here with us today, and please join us outside. I think it still looks okay out there, with some tents down on the patio there. First time we've done it outside, but I think it's a nice night to do it that way. Is there a motion to adjourn? One personal point of privilege for Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mr. President. My nephew, Dr. Brett Bagley, I miss your older buddies, so thank you.
Rocco.
Bagley.
Aye.
Festerson.
Aye.
Harding.
Yeah.
Johnson.
Aye.
Milton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Row. Motion passed seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 8:27.[1609.98]